Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting this beautiful afternoon. Mamie White, it's my pleasure to welcome each of you here. And the first thing we need to do is come out of closed session. Be it resolved that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, and only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed session. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Scott Horn?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
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 Thank you all very much. We'll begin our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Scott Horn, would you lead us today, please?
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We will continue this meeting with a moment of silence for each of you to reflect on those things that are important to you and what you might ask for support in. I would ask that we all remember that we are a community. We are a close community. And one of the obligations of being in a close community is to care for one another. Just this week, we've heard a tragic story of the loss of life of a 10-year-old in Roanoke because of the animosity that that child felt. We must do better. We must take care of each other. And I hope that we can do that in both our thoughts and our actions. So let us all please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now continue, as we often do, with some introductions and recognitions. First, I would like to call the Social Services Director down, please, for the introduction or the introduction of the Director of Social Services.
Madam Chair and Board Supervisors, good afternoon. I'm pleased to introduce to you today our new Director at the Bodotot Department of Social Services. Ms. Rogers was selected as Director of the Bodotot DSS after a thorough four-month recruitment process that included input from the Virginia Social Services Advisory Board, an interview with the Bodotot DSS Board of Directors on December the 18th of 2024. Her start date with our agency was January 6, 2025. Ms. Rogers has an extensive management experience in social work, nonprofit organizations, veteran services, and academic advisory positions in North Carolina and Georgia. Her volunteer services include philanthropy for Duke Hospital, student bookbag drive, veteran stand-down organizer, and applause for a cause. Ms. Rogers, rather, Dr. Rogers, holds a Doctor of Healthcare Administration, Virginia University of Lynchburg, 2025; PhD in Psychology and a minor in Grief Counseling, Briar State University, September 2022, March 2024; a Master's in Human Services and a minor in Business, Liberty University, January 2012, January 2013; a Bachelor in Spanish, Auburn University, August 2005, December 2011. Madam Chair and Board Supervisors, Ms. Raquel Rogers.
Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
I'd like to also add that Dr. Rogers will be back with us next month to give us a synopsis of what Social Services performs and their duties. So we'll be looking forward to that. Thank you.
Wonderful. We'll look forward to hearing from you. And welcome to Bodotot. So happy to have you. Thank you. Next, we'll ask Matt Henkel to come down, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Matt Henkel, your Emergency Communications Systems Manager. Pleased to introduce you today Sean Bennett, who's our new Emergency Communications Technician, one of two positions that we will be filling. Sean grew up in the great state of Indiana, which, if it was 200 years ago, would have been Bodotot. So we'll give him that. And he moved to Roanoke, the Roanoke area, in around 2000. And he's worked with various local radio shops and equipment manufacturers throughout the region. He worked his way up from installing radios in vehicles all the way to a Motorola-certified technical support technician. Excuse me. He has supported many systems, including E911 phone systems and complex trunk radio systems. In 2015, Sean assisted with the implementation and support of the Franklin County Public Safety Radio System, eventually being promoted to the Franklin County Communications Coordinator position. Sean will be a key foundational member for our Emergency Communications Team. His experience with installing and supporting complex emergency communication systems will be an invaluable resource as we move forward in the new communications era. So please welcome Sean Bennett as our new employee.
Welcome. And I guess technically you are from here, right? That's great. We look forward to working with you. And I know you're going to be a great asset to Matt and his team. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Bradbury, don't sit down. You're next up to talk about an award.
Yes. Hello, Madam Chair and all the members of the Board. This is really everyone in Bodotot Counties that works here for local government. We were thrilled to receive a Public Relations Society of America Award for our Getting to Know Boko Initiative that we launched last year to try to humanize not only the people that work in local government, but also kind of make it easier for people to understand exactly what we do day in and day out. You know, we've got a lot of things at the federal level that people get confused about. And that's not what happens here locally. We all live here and are part of the community. So just wanted to share this with you all, that we received this. And we were just really thankful for it.
Congratulations, and thank you for the great work. It's fantastic to be recognized for that. And next, we will invite Mark Balls down to talk about another award.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to stand here before you today. Established in 1929, the Virginia Building and Code Officials Association is a statewide organization of building safety professionals dedicated to the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of all people who live, work, and visit the Commonwealth of Virginia. VBCOA is comprised of eight regions. Each region has a local association and an elected body of officers. The chairperson of each region serves as the region's representative on the VBCA Board of Directors. I am proud to represent our region as the chair. Region Two, which we are part of, stretches from Bath County south to Patrick County and from Giles County east to Appomattox, covering 18 counties, nine cities, eight towns, with a population of over 980,000. I'm here today to express my gratitude to you for your support of our staff as we continue to represent the county at both the regional and state levels. I'm proud to say that five of our staff members sit on at least one of the 14 committees in Region Two, providing a voice for southwest Virginia that is heard throughout the Commonwealth. Your support of Bodotot County's Building Safety Month each May played a huge part in Region Two receiving the 2024 Merit Region of the Year at the Midyear Conference held at Hotel Roanoke earlier this month. We look forward to proudly displaying this plaque here at the Greenfield Center. Thank you again for your support as we work to ensure the safety of Bodotot County residents and represent Bodotot County at regional and state levels.
Congratulations, Mark. Thank you. And now I would like to welcome our Sheriff, Matt Ward, who is going to come down and talk about National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I see lots of telecommunications in the room. So if you all want to come on down as well. Can't have a telecommunications week without our telecommunications people.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Thank you for having us here this afternoon with National Telecommunicators Public Safety Week coming up here in April, the second week of April. We want to recognize the extraordinary work that our dispatchers do each and every day that serves the Bodotot County community and keeps them safe. I always recognize them as the first responders. They're the ones that you're talking to when you first call in and speak to someone or a representative from the sheriff's office. So I would request that the Board recognize the national proclamation. And I'm going to read that proclamation for you now. And then after I'm done, I'll recognize a couple of incidents that we've had here currently since winter and as recent as this Sunday of the extraordinary work that they do. We're fortunate to have them. Bodotot County Board of Supervisors Resolution, whereas public safety telecommunications serve as the vital link between the public and emergency responders providing critical assistance during times of crisis; and whereas our dedicated professionals work tirelessly behind the scenes, answering emergency calls, dispatching law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services, and providing lifesaving pre-arrival instructions to those in need; and whereas public safety telecommunications must remain calm under pressure, thinking quickly and acting decisively to ensure the safety of both first responders and the public they serve; and whereas their commitment, professionalism, and skill are essential to the effective functioning of our emergency response system, helping to protect life and property every day; and whereas National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, observed annually during the second full week of April, recognizes the hard work and dedication of these individuals who are the unseen heroes of public safety; and whereas the citizens of Bodotot County are encouraged to express their gratitude and appreciation for the invaluable services provided by our Bodotot County Emergency Communications 911 dispatcher. I would ask that y'all would recognize that and approve that resolution.
But, go ahead.
For, I want to recognize what the extraordinary work that they do. This past winter, despite the outages that we had, and of course, with every winter, you have some sicknesses. These ladies, many of them, volunteered, packed a bag, air mattress, took cold showers when we didn't have electricity in the bathrooms themselves, and spent the night. So for them to come from their day off, from the warmth of their home, from their loved ones, I want to recognize that. And this past Sunday, there was a large-scale law enforcement event that required extra assistance, and many of them were off as well. You know, they all come together as a team. And many of these several dispatchers called in and volunteered to come back to work to ensure that the office was staffed and calls were handled. So they work tirelessly along our law enforcement officers. They and my us are the first responders. And their willingness to drop everything and come in shows the true commitment that dispatchers have in our community here in Bodotot County. So I'm proud of them.
Well said. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Ask for a move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all so much for your work. Thank you all. We have our citizen comment period regarding items specific to the agenda. Do I have anyone? Anyone want to speak to agenda items? Well, then we will move on to item number four. Normally, when we have distinguished guests in the audience, we like to recognize them upfront in our introductions. But I didn't do that today because I wanted to save and build suspense for our economic development announcement that our own delegate, Austin, is going to help us with. So Delegate Austin, if you would like to come down, we are thrilled to have you with us today. Appreciate all the work you have just done in Richmond and will do in Richmond. But today, we have even more exciting news.
Thank you, Chairman White. Good afternoon, Board members. Chairman White and fellow Board members, I understand what you do. I did it for 16 years, and I commend you for the effort and time that you spend doing it. It's a great contribution to our community. Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here with you, and thank you for having me. Today, we celebrate the success and forthcoming expansion of Munter's, a vital company here in Bodotot County's Greenfield Industrial Park. We also acknowledge decades-long efforts that have made Greenfield and Bodotot a place of growth and opportunity. As we recognize these accomplishments, I'm honored to introduce a message from someone who has fostered an environment for business to thrive in Virginia, Governor Glenn Youngkin. Governor Youngkin has made economic development a cornerstone of his administration. Through initiatives like Virginia's Business Ready Sight Program, he has ensured that the Commonwealth is prepared to compete and succeed in attracting top-tier companies. His commitment to maintaining a business-friendly environment has solidified Virginia's reputation as a national leader. Under his leadership, Virginia has once again been named the number-one state for business by CNBC. Today, we see the results of Governor Youngkin's policies and Bodotot's vision. As we look to the future with great optimism, it is my honor to introduce a very special video message from Governor Glenn Youngkin, who has graciously recorded his congratulations to Bodotot County and Munter's for their expansion plans in Greenfield. Please join me in welcoming Governor Glenn Youngkin's remarks.
Good afternoon. It's Governor Glenn Youngkin, and I so wish that I could be with you in person. But thank you for letting me join you this way to celebrate the expansion of Munter's Corporation's facilities. What an opportunity it is for all of us to celebrate at your board meeting the incredible $29.9 million investment that's going to create 270 new jobs, spurring job growth in Bodotot County. As a global leader in climate control solutions, Munter's choice to expand in Bodotot, right next to its current facility, highlights Virginia's strategic advantages and Bodotot's strategic advantages as our pro-business climate and our skilled workforce continue to attract investment across the state. Munter's advanced climate control technologies are used in data centers, livestock farming, greenhouses, battery and pharmaceutical production, all industries that have an established presence right here in Virginia. And that established presence is growing. This expansion will support climate control technologies for data centers, growing our data center ecosystem both through its investment in the data center development itself and the supply chain that keeps them going. This announcement underscores our shared goal to make Virginia the very best state for business. In December, Business Facilities named Virginia the 2024 State of the Year. This distinction came on the heels, of course, of CNBC naming Virginia the top state for business in America. Investments like Munter's are the real-world example of why Virginia is winning these distinctions, but more importantly, shows that we will continue to compete to be the top state for business for years to come. Thank you to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, Bodotot County, and the Roanoke Regional Partnership, because they all came together to secure this project, not just for Bodotot, but for Virginia. To the Munter's team and Board, thank you for your continued commitment to Virginia. Thank you for believing in us. We're excited to support your growth and success here in the Commonwealth. And as we celebrate this announcement, let's remember that it's a testament to what we can achieve when business, government, and communities work together. May God bless all of you, and may He bless the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Thank you. Thank you, Governor Youngkin. And I can attest, I asked Governor Youngkin to be here personally, and he would have loved to have been. But last night, at 12:00 PM, was the deadline for his vetoes on 900 bills. So he's worked hard every day. On Monday night, he was at the VA 250 in Williamsburg. He had to speak there. But last night, he had to finish with the bill. So he wanted to be here. He regrets not being here with you, but I think this suffices. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Thank you, Delegate Austin. Today's announcement follows Munter's 2021 decision to locate its 365,000-square-foot state-of-the-art manufacturing facility here at Greenfield, and Munter's currently employs over 350 already in Bodotot County. We are excited about today's news of the Munter's expansion here at Greenfield with its developer partner, Graham &amp; Company. They plan to construct an additional 200,000-square-foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent Greenfield Lot 1B, representing a capital investment of $29,949,000, and hire an additional 270 employees in the community, paying salaries more than the current prevailing wage in Bodotot County.
Thank you, Luke. We also have some of our economic development partners here today that we'd like to recognize. John Hall is the Executive Director of the Roanoke Regional Partnership. And Jake Phillips is representing the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. If I may, it was Luke and Jake who primarily put together this project for Munter's and for Bodotot County and for the Commonwealth. And I personally appreciate their work on this project. And it was good to step back a little bit and watch them do it. So very much appreciate their contributions. There is one item of business for the Board of Supervisors at this time for you to consider. The Commonwealth of Virginia has approved a $1 million Commonwealth Opportunity Fund incentive that has been leveraged to secure this expansion for Virginia. We competed with communities in Texas and Massachusetts for this important expansion project. There is a performance agreement among the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, Munter's, Bodotot County, and the Economic Development Authority to provide the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund incentive grant to Munter's. There are no direct local county dollars involved in this incentive package. And Munter's development partner, Graham &amp; Company, is purchasing Lot 1B from the Economic Development Authority. The purchase agreement, or excuse me, the performance agreement has been reviewed by council, and it is presented to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, first of all, Ken, Luke, your team, John, all the partners for bringing this opportunity to Bodotot. Is there a motion to approve the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement with Munter's as presented pending final attorney review and acceptance by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Munter's Corporation is based in Stockholm, Sweden, and operates in 30 countries and has 5,400 employees globally. At this time, I would like to introduce representatives from Munter's, Brian Kraft, Vice President in the Commercial Division, Chris Higgins, Plant Manager, Dean Owen, Project Manager, and Barry Bain, Director of Facilities. Please join us up here for a presentation of a token of our appreciation for the partnership that we have formed in recent years and is prospering right here in Bodotot County. Every primary employer that locates to our county receives the flag of Bodotot County. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors and Economic Development Authority, we would like to present you with Bodotot County's flag. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You're so happy to be here. Who gets this? We fight over. Thank you. We're so happy.
It's my honor to present to you a flag. It's been flown over to Virginia State Capitol on behalf of Governor Glenn Youngkin to show and express his appreciation to you for the growth and the contribution to the economy and the Commonwealth of Virginia. We hope you'll fly this flag proudly. When you wear it out, I'll get you another. But we've got a stack of these boxes about this tall, so just keep throwing here in Bodotot, and we'll keep bringing you flags. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Austin. And congratulations, and thank you to the Munter's team. It's been a pleasure working with them for these last several years. As we celebrate another economic development announcement, it is worthwhile to point out that today's announcement represents the fifth economic development announcement since 2021. Today's announcement follows announcements in the immediate prior years with Altek Industries, Eldor, Universal Logistics, and New Belgium Brewing. In total, since 2021, these companies have made decisions to create and expand jobs in the community of 665 jobs and investments of $146.1 million. Manufacturing is booming in Bodotot County, as these figures indicate, with growth of manufacturing jobs in the county from 2020 to 2023 of 27%, with private sector jobs growing by 8.6% and private sector wages in Bodotot County alone between 2020 and 2023 growing by roughly 23%. This economy is doing very well, and it's largely attributed to the manufacturing that is coming into the county and the employment base that is then generating the additional activity. So very much appreciate everything that companies like Munter's and others do to help with the economic prosperity of this community. If you do have any questions, we're happy to take them. But thank you for your time. And again, congratulations, and thank you to the Munter's team.
Thank you. Any questions for anyone involved? Any comments?
Keep it going.
Good job.
What's next month? Thank you so much to everybody, and again, to Munter's. I was there for your ribbon cutting on your first building. So happy to see this happening again for you all and really value deeply your partnership with our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, then, back to more mundane business. Has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I wondered if we could have our legal counsel, Mr. Lockerbie, do a little more explanation on Item A.
Yeah, Mr. Michael, I know that you had had a question for me, and I wanted to make sure and clarify for everyone on the Board. This is not us making them an offer to settle. This is our making what we lawyers call a demand, but saying, "We're willing to settle for X amount of money." Henry Schein was involved in distribution of opioids, which is a piece of litigation. which is a piece of litigation that we've been involved with now for several years. They were a relatively small distributor, and our outside counsel recommends on behalf of all of the Virginia localities that we offer to settle with them for $450,000. The amount of money that would come back to Bodotat County would be a bit over $2,200. This is to compensate the public for the amount of money that between our sheriff's office, our EMS office having to resuscitate people, our DSS having to deal with people who were in bad times, the Behavioral Health Organization, all these different organizations that we are members of, who had to deal with the fallout of either opioids addiction or people who had a heroin addiction that had begun as an opioids addiction, and their family and friends who had to deal with the repercussion of those addictions. So it's a relatively small amount of money, but wanted to clarify what that was about.
Thank you.
Further questions? Anything else? Do I have a motion for approval?
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Davis, if you would come down, please, for Item 6, the approval of transfers and additional appropriations.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you said, a little bit more mundane than the exciting stuff. For the month of March, there was one transfer request, which is a quarterly transfer to various departments related to store supplies by purchasing. Additionally, there were six pass-through appropriations. The first is to appropriate funds to the jail related to medical reimbursements and social security incentives. The second is to appropriate funds to the sheriff's office related to miscellaneous reimbursements, fees, overtime for security, and contract payments. Two are for appropriations to the libraries for donations received. There is one for fire and EMS for funds received from Radford University to reimburse part-time wages. And the last is an appropriation from the State Compensation Board to offset the systems maintenance costs for Clerk of the Circuit Court. There are no regular appropriations for the month. It is requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Any questions?
No questions. Move for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Davis. We'll move right on to the approval of accounts payable and ratification of the short accounts payable list.
Total expenditures that are being requested for approval for March for all funds are $1,550,939.81. Notable dispersments for the month include $218,000 paid to Air Care for battery-powered extrication, excuse me, rescue tools, $239,000 on the transfer to the Bodotat EDA for release of funds to Eldor for a local revenue performance grant, $245,000 paid to Architectural Partners for the Reed Mountain Expansion and Nine and One Center project, and finally, $65,000 for the Bodotat County Museum Phase II work. Are there any questions or comments related to accounts payable for the month?
Anything?
Madam Chair, if there's no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. And we'll keep you up here for one more item. If you could continue on with your monthly budget updates.
Thank you. Yes, as you mentioned, we have another budget update, as we have been doing each board meeting this cycle. So you can see in our roadmap, we are certainly progressing along and headed towards the finish line. So in the month of March, the budget subcommittee meetings were held as planned, and those recommendations were transmitted to the entire board. You can see we're at the marker afterwards, which is the advertised budget presentation to the full board. And of course, after this, we will have a public hearing with a more in-depth presentation and a planned adoption at the board meeting on April 22. So just again, as a quick reminder, this was the framework that was provided to departments when submitting their budget requests for this year. 3% increase max on non-personnel operating requests, that the requests be in alignment with board priorities, prioritize support for Parks and Recreation, and finally, focus on employee recruitment and retention. I have to tell you, it was fun putting these completed stamps on. So as you can see, we are through our formal internal stages of review, though obviously amendments can still be made to the budget at this point. These were just the formal steps or review process that we had in place. So the final one, the budget subcommittee, is now concluded. Okay, next up, taking a look at our operating expenditures picture. Really, the primary change from last month was the funding for the schools, which now includes an increased contribution of $2.4 million, as well as some updates that were made based on anticipated compensation adjustments in the state budget. As was already mentioned, the governor did complete his review, send amendments forward. I have not had a chance to review that yet, but I will, and obviously, if amendments need to be made, we will be looking to do that. So as you can see, education remains the largest categorical expense area, followed closely by public safety, which combined comprised about 2/3 of the operating budget. So next up is capital. Not much change on this since last month. There was a slight decrease. Originally, as you may recall, we started off with a request of $6.4 million. That has now been brought down to a little less than half of that at $3 million. Categorically, they are all pretty much remaining about the same from last time. Okay, so in this graph, we can see the progression of the budget as it goes, moves through all the internal stages of review for both fiscal year '25, which is shown by the green line, and the current budget we're working on for fiscal year '26, shown by the blue line. So you can kind of see and compare the progression of both years. I will note that the funding decision for the schools in both years was made at the budget subcommittee level, so that is really what accounts for the change that you see, the primary accounting of the change that you see in the last dot there. And also, I will note that these are, were the numbers in place at the time of the budget subcommittee conclusion, not necessarily what was adopted or what will be adopted this year. Okay, and next up, we have a picture of our revenue projections. This shows where we started off with the adopted budget for the current year and how those estimates have progressed as we move through the process. There was a slight decrease from last month to this month in both federal and local revenues. This was offset by an increase in anticipated state revenues for a net increase of $200,000, so a very minor change for that. Again, state budget's not final. Hopefully soon, we will continue to amend that as we know more. Okay, and finally, we have a quick overall picture of where we stand with everything, with the revenues being represented by the green blocks and the expenditures shown by the orange lines, with the left column representing the requested budget and the right column showing where we are currently with the draft budget. So at the beginning, we started off with a budget gap of $5.7 million. And through amendments to approved expenditures and forecasted revenues, that figure is down to $2 million, which will be covered by available fund balance, represented here with the blue block. And that's all for this time. Are there any questions I could answer? I appreciate everyone staying awake.
For those of you who don't, haven't been attending each month, I just want to come in, Ms. Davis. She's put together these updates. This has followed the same format throughout the budget process. It allows us to stay abreast of where we are in the process. As you noted, these are not final numbers. We still have to go through that part. But I really appreciate you kind of roadmapping us through this rather complicated process, and it helps us let our constituents know where we are in the process and where there can be input. So thank you for that. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
You say the process has gone, it seems to go. The situation doesn't get easier every year, but the process goes better. So I think we're doing a good job. I think the budget task force, right on target, worked real well. And I just think it's been a good process this year.
And as we're getting close to adoption, I wanted to thank Supervisor Clinton, Supervisor Michael for serving on the budget subcommittee, Supervisor Nicely, and Supervisor Michael for serving on our school budget task force. So there has been input and conversation, and we hope to keep that coming and culminate with a robust budget that we can pass next month.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Davis, because I know we kept you very busy for the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate your input. And it wasn't uncommon to get emails from you at 10 o'clock at night. So really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're very welcome. Thank you.
You're not in public accounting, but you're acting like it in April, right? Thank you. Now, we will move on to VDOT. I have two names here, but I only see one, Ashley Mathina. So I assume you're going to be giving us the update and leading the work session. Wonderful. Welcome back.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. Brian Blevins is on vacation this week, so I am standing in. So our report this month starts with our yearly resurfacing contracts. We don't have a start date on when the paving will start as of yet, but sometime in the next couple of months, we will start to see them around the county. We had one outstanding traffic work order that was around installing some truck crossing signs on Route 11 near Gibson Lane. Those were actually installed yesterday. So an update from the report that you have there, that we were waiting for them to be installed, they have been installed. Land use, as usual, which is great, has stayed busy with plan sets here in Bodotat County. If you have any questions specific to any of the listed ones, I'm happy to answer any questions. Our International Parkway project out here should be wrapping up in June, with any luck. So you should start to see things kind of start wrapping up. Daily lane closures may still be happening, but the continuous lane closures are finished. The Hunter's Green Full Depth Reclamation Project should start soon as well. There was a scheduled pre-con for tomorrow. Unfortunately, the contractor had a conflict come up, and that will be rescheduled. So I was hoping to have some more information to give to you guys this week, but I don't. So as soon as we do have that pre-con, we'll make sure to update the county on the start date for that. As far as our routine maintenance work, you're going to see a lot of grading of the gravel roads, a lot of pothole patching after winter. There's still some debris cleanup that we're doing from the winter storms. So some basic work, but necessary work to get things prepped for the summer. Also, an update on Fringer Trail, our rural rustic project. That will be paved by the end of April. So.
Can I share that news?
Yes, and actually, that is one of the first ones on our list. So if weather does not get us, we should be starting next week. And signs have been put up on the road to notify residents. So weather pending, we should be out there next week.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything that I can answer or address or take back and find out more information for you?
Start with Blue Ridge.
I want to thank you all for your work there on Lehman Town Road, and also your thinking out of the box of a way to fix that continuing problem, which should last as well into the future. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And Castle?
Yes, I'd sent a, just basically forwarded a complaint that was sent to me, to Mr. Blevins, and within three days, the guy emailed me back and said, "Thank you, it's done."
Was this the issue on Red Bud?
It was, no, this one was, Red Bud probably will come up.
We addressed some of the pothole issues on the road as of yesterday, I think.
Well, it was Martin Lane.
Okay.
Gravel road. They gravelled, got the potholes corrected and bladed. There's a ditching problem out there that Mr. Blevins said he'd take another look at later on or have the superintendent do so, but thanks for the very quick response.
Absolutely.
Amsterdam?
Last month, I asked Mr. Blevins about any potential for cleaning up the two abandoned service stations on Ex. 150 along 220. Anything filter down to you on that?
There's no updates on that. The contractor will demo those on their schedule. And I, so there's no further information that I can offer today on those, but as we hear more, we'll be sure to relay that.
Contractor who's?
So are you talking about the two abandoned service stations right there by the exit? So those are part of the bigger 81 project, and they'll be demoed at some point. But the schedule of that is controlled by the contractor for the project.
Yeah, I guess the hope was, recognizing that that's not going to be immediate, that maybe we can get those two buildings cleaned up in the meantime, through forces other than the contractor.
We'll certainly try our best, but since they're not under our control directly at the moment, it may be a little harder to get them to address certain issues. But I'll make sure to follow up on that one.
Is that all from you?
Yes, ma'am.
Valley?
Just looking forward to Hunter's Green getting started and finished.
Yeah, very excited about that one, and very excited to know that we can actually do the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, yes. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And from Buckhand, I have two things. We emailed about the house on Wheatland Road with the rock, the historic rock wall. Thank you, first of all, for digging way back in history and helping us.
Yeah, I'm impressed I found it.
Finding some old information. I just want to make sure that you all are squared away for summertime and mowing. And have you been in contact with the owner? Do I need to make any connections?
I have not been in contact with the owner. I do think I owed you another follow-up. I don't know what parcel was transferred in that letter.
Can we kind of look, can you continue to look into that?
I can see, yeah, I can see what records I can find.
And if you would like to make contact with the owner, I will make that happen so we can make sure, I don't want any damage to be done this summer during mowing season. I drove by there the other day real slowly, and some of the rocks are very close to the road. So I want to make sure that no accidents happen there, that the wall's not damaged further. So let's keep that on our list of kind of alert places.
Absolutely, and our own crews do our secondary route, so I can personally make sure that
Make sure if you want to.
we're taking more care in that particular area.
Super, super. So if any follow-up, we'll do that via email. And then we're going to talk about this in your next item, but there was some maintenance requests on Flowing Springs. Do you know the status of those?
I don't know the status of those specific work requests, but I did add it to the list for discussion for the surface treatment.
Sure. And that, yeah, so we'll talk about that next. But if you could, I think there's an existing order to request some pothole repair right now.
Oh, absolutely, I can follow up on that one.
And then thank you for Fringer Trail. Those residents will be.
I know, they'd be very excited to have that one complete.
Thank you. So anything else as far as the monthly updates? Great, we will move right into the work. Great. We will move right into the work session on the 26 to 31, that sounds, that's hard to say, Secondary System Six-Year Plan. The VDOT presentation.
That's okay. I have my printout, so I can see it. Sure. Yeah. So today we're just here to talk about the, the current priority lists and any potential projects that you'd like to add to the priority list moving forward. So our, all the allocations passed this year are future allocations. They can be adjusted up and down, but should remain relatively close to what's shown in the presentation. Bonnetot County is very fortunate and, or unfortunate, depending if you don't like unpaved roads. But there are a lot of unpaved road miles in Bonnetot County, and therefore you receive a lot of funding to pave those roads should you wish. At the moment, there is quite a few future years that have not been allocated to projects just because there wasn't a project to allocate those funds to at the time. So we can certainly add something to the end of the priority list, and it'll be fully funded in that year, which is also great, not having to wait several years to fund a project. The other funding source that you have is tele fees. Though, as a reminder, the tele fees don't have a lot of restrictions to them. It can be used for a variety of different projects. There, we've used them for drainage improvement projects, one of which we just completed recently on Blue Ridge Drive and Third Street out in the Blue Ridge area. And then you've also allocated some money for the town of Finn Castle to be able to use to convert the remaining sections of Main Street and Back Street to one-way streets to match the rest of the system out there once the courthouse project is complete. So those funds are very flexible in nature, typically are only used on secondary routes, however. So the current priority list has Fringer Trail as number one, which will be completed here shortly. The second priority was Blue Ridge Drainage, Blue Ridge Drive Drainage Improvements, which has been completed. The next rural rustic project on the list is Stevens Road, which we had hoped to have completed this year. We'll probably start work on what needs to be done on that road this year, but it will not actually be hard-surfaced likely this year. Hunter's Green subdivision was also on the priority list. That one will be completed this year. And just to clarify, Stevens Road is funded with the unpaved road funds, where the full-depth reclamation in Hunter's Green was funded with the tele fees. And so they could happen concurrently. So that kind of explains why Hunter's Green can move forward, but Stevens Road had not progressed. Next on the list was Ballpark Road, and then Mountain Valley, and then the last little section of Lehman Town, which is very short. After that, Roy Road, then Old Hollow, Red Bud Lane, and then Haymaker Town. So we have projects scheduled through 2031 at this point, which is wonderful. But that does lead us to, if you'd like to add the next priority to the list. Over the years, we've looked at several different roads. See if I can catch up on my screen. No, that's okay. So some potential projects that we have are, is Route 638 Flowing Springs Road. The rough estimated cost of this one is $650,000. The traffic count on it was 50 vehicles per day, and it's approximately 1.25 miles long, just the unpaved portion of it. The next potential project for consideration would be the next section of Fringer Trail. We would propose to start it where this project ended, which is at one of the bridges. The estimated cost would be $550,000 with a traffic count of 80 vehicles per day, and that would be a mile long. We've talked about Trevi several times in the years past. This one does have quite a few drainage issues that would be a lot of work to solve in order to make it a good project. It's just over half a mile long, potentially a $550,000 cost, and again, 50 vehicles per day. Sugar Tree Hollow has been on the list for a long time, but this one also has some difficulties. One, its length and where you would want to start and stop the project. In order to phase it, it'd be very difficult to do all four and a half miles at once. The total cost would, for all four and a half miles would be, you know, over $3 million, which would take a long time to accumulate the funds to do that. So our proposed priority list would be to keep the routes that are in the, on the priority list currently in the order in which they have been in the previous year. And then number 10, either adding Fringer Trail or Flowing Springs Road. There is a potential you could add both. It's just which one you would want to prioritize over the other. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
I was wondering about trying to get one added to a potential.
Sure.
Zion Hill Road only has about a mile to go. It's paved on each end. But to get from pavement to pavement, you got about a mile to go. And I've had several people mention that one to me, and I thought I'd pass that along.
Sure, we can take a look at it.
Route 681, I believe.
681. All right. Yeah, we'll check to make sure it meets the vehicles per day threshold, so it has to have at least 50 vehicles per day. And if it does, then we'll take a look at it to see what it might take to make that. Okay.
Busy road.
And what I can do is I can, I can package it all together and present it next month for the public hearing or send the information to you ahead of time so you can see as well.
Question. Is there any significance to the fact that each of the potential projects you've identified, VDOT's identified? Is that just a coincidence?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
The potential projects that have been identified, each one of them is under the Rural Rustic Program.
Correct.
Any significance to that, or is that just coincidence? Or is that the way they all are now?
Um, the, it's kind of an ongoing list of ones that we've looked at previously, ones that have been brought to my attention for this year's consideration. There wasn't any project in particular that I was asked to look at that would use tele fees. So if there is a project that someone had in mind that wanted to use the tele fees, that certainly could be considered and added to the potential project list as well.
So you'll bring a proposal kind of next month and?
Yes, ma'am. I'll have a presentation that's very similar in nature here with the priority list, maybe a little bit more formal as to the, the order or what projects that anyone feels like should be on there.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Nice to be back to talk to you.
It's good to have you back.
That's okay.
Mr. McFadden? We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, VDOT Economic Development Access Program Resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am absent of my notes, so I will wing it. So we have a resolution before you to submit to the Virginia Department of Transportation to accomplish the request for funding from the Department of Transportation and the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Thank you very much. Tiffany, you were wonderful. To accomplish the construction of a new access road in the northeast quadrant of Bonnetot Center at Greenfield. This access road would accomplish providing improved access to the existing Appalachian Power Substation as well as accessing the Commerce Park and its sites to the east adjacent to Highway 220. This resolution has been reviewed by VDOT staff, and we have a total project cost estimate of 1.5 million that has been prepared by our engineering consultant. And we can request up to $850,000 from the Commonwealth Transportation Board to accomplish this project. We can request one such funding grant per fiscal year. And so this would be the grant that we would request for this year. And it is approximately a 1,400-foot linear two-lane access road from Highway 220 into the park. Happy to answer any questions.
And you all have the resolution in your packets. Any questions for Mr. McFadden?
Madam Chair, if there's no questions, I'll move for approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of this resolution as written. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 13, Resolution of '08, Item 12, sorry. Consideration of the Antenna Site Agreement between SBA Towers 2 LLC and Bonnetot County. Matt Hinkle will come back up and walk us through this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good to be with you again. This agenda item is for, it's one in a series that we've gone through over those several months where we're going to be leasing space on towers, this particular, for the emergency communication system. This particular tower is located off McKinney Hollow Road, up just inside of Allegheny County. And will shoot radio coverage back down towards Iron Gate and the 220 corridor on the northern end of the county where we have some deficiencies in our current system. The lease agreement is for, I believe, five years with four, five-year extensions. It'll be $3,000 a month with a 3% escalator, which is pretty standard with these agreements. It has been reviewed by Mr. Lockaby for legal sufficiency. And our recommendation is that the board approve this lease agreement with SBA Towers, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
No questions. I ask for approval. Second.
Motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. While you're here.
Yes, ma'am.
So we did have a constituent question as we were talking about these towers. And it's appropriate that we talk about the towers today with our telecommunications team here and recognizing the great work that they do. Someone asked about the quiet zone, and I didn't know all about the quiet zone. So I immediately went to you, and you gave a really great answer. Could you share just some oversight over, you know, some big picture comments with the group today on what that means and how we are adhering to that?
Yes, ma'am. So the National Quiet Zone is derived from the Green Bank Observatory up in West Virginia. It was established in the late 50s. Some would argue that it was part of the Cold War, but it has evolved into a scientific endeavor where they're listening for extraterrestrial signals and things of that nature. And because of that radio, radiation, I should say, back towards the observatory is extremely limited. Fortunately for us, we're on the very edge of the quiet zone. As a matter of fact, it actually runs, bisects the county right around Finn Castle. So only the northern portion of the county is in the quiet zone. However, it does impact the amount of power that we can radiate from the towers in the northern end of the county. And it does, it does have a significant effect in the design of the system. And we've had to work around that with several changes that we've had to make in the system.
And that's what I really wanted to recognize is that you have to adjust what might seem more appropriate planning to accommodate this. So I appreciate the work that you've done on that. I appreciate the education and the willingness to explain this to, to our community. So thank you for that. Any questions? Wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Thanks. You too. Now we have item number 13. Rich Evans will come down and talk to us about the resolution of assurances to VDOT.
Madam Chair, and Board of Supervisors, thank you for having me and good afternoon. I'm here to ask for a resolution of assurances for VDOT for the Bonnetot County Courthouse Project land use permit. To compete, to complete our project, we're going to need to do work in the VDOT right-ofways. And, and typically, when contractors do work in the right-ofways, they have to be bonded. But local governments can get a resolution of assurances to provide that, that local government or Bonnetot County in this case restore the right-of-way to standard and that the county is financially, the financial responsible party in lieu of a bond. Under our construction contract, the general contractor, Jamerson Lewis, is the, is required to do the restoration, and they are bonded as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Evans? The resolution is found in your packet.
No questions. I ask for approval of the resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to hear about Let's Go Boko. Victor Morales, if you would come down, please, and address Agenda Item 14.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello, everybody. Thank you for giving me the time today to kind of talk about two different things. First, I'm going to go through a demonstration of what we call Let's Go Boko. And then I'm going to give you a few updates about parks and recreation, what we've got going on. Very excited to showcase this. We launched this on the 19th of this month. This is actually a website application that was built completely in-house. Matthew Lindsay in the back, he's a planner too in the Community Development Department. If you can go ahead and raise your hand back there in case you don't know him. He built this completely for us. I'm just a salesman, basically showcasing why it's great and why our county should use it. This was built for local residents in mind, but also can be used for tourism. It could be used for people visiting our county to discover all the different unique things that exist. This demonstration that I'm going to show, it also exists on our website here, but I'm going to actually walk through it with you all live. So when you click into it, you're going to have this kind of landing page here that just gives a little bit of information about it. Essentially, what this is, is we're trying to make it easier for people to have self-guided adventures. Through this application, we have over 50 different locations currently mapped out on here. The way I put it is every weekend, you can take your kids and do something new and amazing. You can take your loved ones to do something cool and amazing. I'm going to just get started right here by clicking on Let's Go Boko. And here you'll see, this is a story map built in ArcGIS that showcases all these different locations for you here. ArcGIS, which is kind of the software that this is built out of, they're in the transition process of a previous edition of the software and are transitioning to a newer edition, which is this is built on. So as they solidify that transition, user experience will improve. But we felt like this product was good as it is, and we wanted to really just give it to people as the weather is getting nicer. So if you would click on any one of these little pins here, it'll just give you a little bit of information about what that place is. So here is the running run trail all the way up in Eagle Rock. If I was to click down here, it would give, let's just say, the Boxley Park and a location also. This is the desktop version. There's also a mobile version that you can see on your phone. All this is available on our website, but in the orange, the dots indicate trails and different places to go hiking. The light green is parks and green spaces, light blue, swimming, fishing, boating, dark blue, road and mountain biking. And then green is other regional resources that I'll get back to later on. But this is the kind of big picture view of it all, all of it specific into the Bonnetot County boundaries. But by clicking on here, I'm going to get a filtered view on, let's just say. But by clicking on here, I'm going to get a filtered view on, let's just say, I want to go onto a trail or a trailhead. Here are all the different trails and trailheads that exist in Bodatot County. This is an ever-growing site, so if there is a trail that we missed, there is a way that people can give us suggestions and give us more information about what it is. And since our developer is in-house, so we can kind of constantly keep this updated. But let's just say, once again, this right here, Roaring Run Trail is where I want to head to. The object ID is matched, the number over here on the side of the screen. And if you were to click on any of these little dots down here, you can find all the other different locations. But let's just say that I want to learn more information about Roaring Run. Clicking on the information, it's just giving me a little bit of information that it's an easy hike. It gives me enough information that I can go strictly off of this. I see that there's restrooms, there's a trail kiosk, beautiful waterfall to drag you in there as well. Clicking on more information, you'll find out that this is actually, you know, land from the U.S. Forest Service. A lot of these locations include U.S. Forest Service, Appalachian Trail, Bodatot County, one of the things that attracted me to this area. 140 miles of Forest Service trails out there, about 60 miles of Appalachian Trail and all these other different locations. And I can just learn all of that right here. Then, if I were to click on Directions, all the different locations, all the different pins on the map take you to the view here where you can then click Directions, be able to find from your home address, you can find it from wherever you are, you know, in the world, you know, to make it, once again, easier for residents, for visitors to be able to find these amazing different locations. Once again, if I was to click on suggestions right here, it'll lead to this Microsoft form. So this right here can tell you, there's other recreational assets that we know we may have missed that maybe you know of a park in your neighborhood, maybe you know of something that somebody wants to share to us. They can give us information here. They can give us some information about the quality of the green spaces that we have, the quality of the different recreational resources. Give us a little bit of a review of the usability of the site and just give us any information. So even if we don't necessarily manage the U.S. Forest Service roads, maybe they give us a comment here and then we talk to them about what it is that they need. Once again, just making it easier for residents to contact us so that we can kind of be that middleman for them on their next adventure. Click and go home brings me back here. And let's just say, I want to go to Parks and Green Spaces. Exact same thing exists here where I can click on information, be able to find that Blue Ridge Park. It has grills, it has a large pavilion, soccer fields, all these different amenities right here. Once again, just making it easier for residents to be able to find all the locations that exist. All this to say, beyond Bodatot, as everybody in here probably knows, the Roanoke region has a lot to offer and we don't want to discount that as well. So we have this Other Regional Resources tab here that links to the Roanoke Outside website where you'll be able to find other land, water adventures all throughout the Roanoke region. Once again, linking it to a page that they constantly update this website, leaving it low maintenance for our staff to be able to provide up-to-date information for the residents of Bodatot County. Maybe you're new to this stuff, maybe you've never been hiking before. We also just provided this little what-to-bring kind of tab here so that you can see, here are just some recommendations for you and your family to be able to explore Boko. That's the basis of the website. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but this is just something that we used to get a lot of phone calls in our office about, hey, like, I want to go hiking with my child. I don't know where is a good place. We would try and explain to them on the phone. We'd have them write down pen and paper exactly where to go. But now we can direct them to a website that makes it easier for them to have adventure in their pocket. But that's the basis of the site there. And just to give a general update about Parks and Recreation, what we've got going on. I love to be in a county that appreciates recreation. You know, we've talked a lot about wanting to emphasize some development in the area. Not to say that, you know, we aren't the only ones to develop this area. There's other organizations that are trying to provide ways of getting people outside and kind of enjoying things. Two amazing things that are happening recently, so Roanoke Outside and the Roanoke Regional Partnership. They've actually approved for us to have a $9,032 grant so that we can improve Last Lock Park in Eagle Rock so that we can kind of bring that back up to its glory, reestablish the pavilion as a place that people can rent and go out there, have a picnic with their family, walk around the natural trails there. It goes right along the James River as well. So that money is going towards the pavilion, fixing that up as well as some signage and fixing some fences out there. But once again, there is just the Roanoke region, you know, sees this in Bodatot County as a place to invest in. Not only that, but even beyond just the permanent structures and facilities out there. We also are currently working with somebody who's thinking about donating us about $11,000 modular temporary demonstration pool. So for those of you who've been to Boko Wild before, you may notice that there is a pool in the middle of Buchanan Town Park that people are allowed to kayak in and try it for the first time. That pool costs us about $2,300 a year to rent for that one day. But this one organization might be providing us this pool that we'd be able to keep indefinitely. It is a commercial-grade pool that has low maintenance and has a five-year warranty and is designed to last for about 30 years. So that's saving us money every single year, still providing an amazing experience for people. And we're just grateful for that. More information on that to come when those details get finalized. But just very excited that people are looking to invest in Bodatot County and I'm excited that you all are as well. This is just something I wanted to showcase a little bit about. So we talk a lot about our youth sports program, which is great. It's a very strong program and we love it. Over 700 kids play each season, about 700 and 900 kids play each season. But I want all of Bodatot County to know, I want you all to know that recreation's for everybody. Whether it be that you're a youth, you know, playing between the ages of four and 17 years old, whether it be that you're a young family, married, without kids, whether you be retired, no matter who you are, there is something for you to do. Maybe it's even just going to go watch a sports game at the sports complex. Here are just 13 tournaments that are specific to Bodatot County. Overall, you know, there's over 30, about 40, you know, tournaments that we do each year. But these are all specific to Bodatot County. Other ones are in partnership with Salem and other different jurisdictions in this area. But what I wanted to showcase in here was the economic impact that comes from the sports complex existing to continue to urge you all to continue investing in that and what it provides for this county and just the overall Roanoke region. So I spoke to John Oni, who is the Vice President of Sales for Sports Marketing at Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. I gave him some numbers about, you know, how many players and coaches and spectators come for all these different events that are specific to Bodatot County. And through these 13 events, you can kind of see that through concessions, we get about $28,000 out of it. The gate fee is about $10,000. Rental of the fields is about $5,000. But altogether, about 6,000 people come to play and coach. About 5,000 people come as spectators. And the total economic impact that's calculated in their calculator is about $1.5 million in economic impact. So those numbers are specific to hotels, it's specific to food, all those different kinds of things that when they're here for that tournament, it is just a reason for them to come to Bodatot County. And then they're spending that money at the sheets, at the local gas station, at the grocery stores to live and have a good time in this area. This $1.5 million is just for the greater region. Once again, this is a calculation on a conservative end. And this is only a third of the tournaments that we provide here. But just once again, beyond just the money that we bring in directly to us, the sports complex and our tourism brings in a lot more value to this region of Virginia. The last kind of thing I want to talk about a little bit, so one of the capital improvement plan projects that we have going on right now is tennis and pickleball in Buchanan as well as at Blue Ridge Park. We're very excited for this to come in and this is just kind of a draft drawing of what it's going to look like. One major thing worth mentioning is that there were some chemical engineering concerns that we wanted to address to make sure that when we invest this $40,000 into resurfacing these courts, that it is done correctly. There was a project that they had done that the product that they used, which comes from a vendor, you know, it failed over time and over, within the first few months. And they went back to the drawing board to evaluate why that happened. It was the first time in years that that had happened. And they realized it's because the temperature may have been too cold to be able to do it, as well as rain may have gotten in there, and they may be using a different vendor for us. But basically, the vendors just wanted to make sure that we had the assurance that the product that they put in is going to last. So we've been delayed a little bit. We wanted to get this project done in March. It's likely now going to have to wait until the temperature gets above 50 degrees and we have some dry weather in the forecast. But the contractor that we're working with has assured us that we're the priority of whenever it is time for them to be able to do the work, they'll be able to go out there and do it. Very exciting for us that they're able to kind of do it in the Bodatot colors. And this is what the Buchanan behind the elementary school, we own a plot of land there called Buchanan Recreation Park. There are two current tennis courts out there that haven't received much love in the past few years. We plan on resurfacing them so that there are two permanent tennis courts. And within that, there are four permanent lined pickleball courts available to be able to play on. The nets for pickleball will be able to be removed for that, but it allows for both sports to be able to play instead of just having one sport take up space with the other sport couldn't use it. So very excited for these projects to come. And to show it a little bit, Blue Ridge Park as well is one of the people who will be getting these. So at Blue Ridge Park, once again, you can kind of see on here that permanent tennis and then there will be these lined pickleball courts with the pickleball nets being able to move away from there. In addition to these projects, also at Blue Ridge Park. So at a previous board meeting, we had reallocated money from Field 5 over at the sports complex, about $138,000. We had re-appropriated that to be a different project and that would be to update other facilities in this region. So this basketball court was set to be repaired in about two years. But because it was right adjacent to the Blue Ridge Park pickleball tennis courts, we now had the money to be able to do that whole project as well. So here you can kind of see with the Boko flower in the middle, we plan on resurfacing these all at the same time. All this should be happening in April, all dependent on weather to make it happen. But I'm sure you all have heard about pickleball and it's being one of the fastest-growing sports, you know, in the country. Tennis is still around and we have a love for tennis. James River High School starting a tennis team as well. We want to be able to provide these opportunities for all of our county, all different residents to be able to use. And then the basketball courts, you know, once again, just really appreciate the money, the time and the effort that you all have been able to give towards Parks and Recreation and I just hope that you continue to provide that and I'll be sure to make sure that these projects get done. And that's all I've got. If you have any questions for me about those updates, I'd be happy to respond to those. And if not, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victor.
Very good. Really gratified to see the emphasis on recreation. And especially, what you're doing is in response to the demographic changes in the county too. More and more people are going to be interested in pickleball, for example. The question on the sports complex, which I also applaud you for. Is there any impact on the fact that Moyer was just completed and, you know, we have worked cooperatively with them in the past?
Yeah.
And sometimes in competition and now they're back and forth.
Yeah, it tends to work in our favor. So one amazing part about working with Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is that there's a regional effort to bring tournaments to this region. So when Moyer books big tournaments and they need more than four fields, because that's the four fields that they have, Bodatot tends to be kind of that they ask for us to have fields available for them. So they get to do all the marketing to bring in the people and then we help support their tournaments that they don't have the infrastructure to completely support. So the updates to Moyer have actually, are probably going to bring in more larger tournaments to this region that we as Bodatot will want to support. Now that being said, with an age, as an aging facility, you know, I may be asking in the future for some additional updates to our Bodatot Sports Complex just to maintain on the quality, to be able to match what is expected at these large regional tournaments. And also in that, one other exciting thing is we're constantly looking for new ways to incorporate children, the kids who play in our rec sports programs to be in the sports complex as well as looking at ways to get adults in there as well. So we've been talking about doing some tournaments, maybe through some of the corporations in this region as well as just adult leagues, you know, to be played during the midweek at the sports complex. So that's one thing that I'm trying to do is not just have it be the tourism driver that it is, but also a regional asset that the people at home get to enjoy as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Victor Rubean, salesman. Matt, thank you for putting it all together. So very good, very neat process for our citizens as well as visitors.
Thank you.
Are there comments?
Well done.
Thank you so much, Victor.
Yes.
Very, very exciting work and I think it does offer resources for everyone, so.
Yeah. So thank you all once again for your support.
Super. Thank you.
And item number 15, our next to-last agenda item is our citizen comment period. I have one form. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not submitted a form? Tammy Riggs, you can come on down. Here, whatever you prefer.
I'm so short. Good afternoon. I'm Tammy Riggs, resident of Daleville, and I've proudly served as principal of Colonial Elementary for 24 years. I'm here to strongly advocate for the full funding of the Bodatot County Public Schools' operating budget ask for the 25-26 school year, which is not what's proposed and you saw earlier. I have closely followed the budget work sessions online and appreciate the commitment of the budget subcommittee members who attend these meetings to discuss funding priorities. However, one critical element missing from these discussions is a clear picture of what these budget decisions mean at the school level, where the real work happens and where lives are changed and where the foundation of our students' futures are built. Approximately 85% of our school division budget is spent on personnel. With the projected funding proposal you saw earlier, my school alone will lose four teaching positions. This is deeply concerning because we don't have fluff. We are cutting to the bone. Our enrollment will remain the same, but we will have fewer teachers to support our students. In practical terms, this means larger class sizes, particularly in the crucial early grades of K through 2. At this level, teachers must meet students where they are. Some arrive well-prepared and have been read to and engaged to from birth. Others have had little or no exposure to language or its environments. And increasingly and more alarmingly, we now see children arriving at the age of four and five to school already addicted to screens and electronics, impacting their attention span, social skills, emotional regulation, and ability to engage in learning. This is not speculation. It's fact. Larger class sizes, particularly in these formative years, will only exacerbate these challenges. A kindergarten or first grade classroom with 24 students instead of 17, 18 significantly reduces a teacher's ability to provide individualized support. Whole groups, small group, and one-to-one instruction are all essential for early literacy and math development, but virtually impossible with the class sizes proposed. And this comes at a time when our students clearly need more support than ever before. Unlike other industries, schools cannot cut back services when understaffed. We cannot reduce our operating hours. We can't reduce the amount of services we provide or just shut down the drive-through when we're short. Every day, we must fully be present, engaged, and committed, meeting the needs of every student, whether we have the resources we need or not. Beyond academics, teachers must ensure students' safety, physically, emotionally, and socially. The increase in trauma and behavioral challenges among young children means that teachers are not just educators, they are caretakers, counselors, and problem solvers. And managing these responsibilities becomes exponentially harder as class sizes grow. I frequently heard families, hear families say that they chose to move to Bodatot County because of our schools. The question before us is, do we want that to remain true? We have an opportunity to invest in our students, our educators, and our community to fully fund what the school's ask is. I urge you to be the ones to make that investment happen. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We will now move on to board member comments. And as the first part of that agenda item, I'm going to ask a couple folks to come down and give us some updates. And then each supervisor will have some opportunity for comment if you choose. Rich Evans, you're closest. Could you give us a courthouse update? And I also think that this is a special occasion in that might today be your birthday.
It's actually tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Happy early birthday, Rich Evans.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Well, Madam Chair, Board, thanks for having me again. So I was going to give you the current status of the courthouse. Some of this, some of these are boring details, but there are things that needed to get completed so we can move forward. Currently, the asbestos removal has been completed in the courthouse. Herb Profit has cleared the building saying there's no longer any asbestos in it. A key milestone in order to demo that building. The chain link fence is removed from the existing retaining wall. The plumbers have been on site. They've been draining all the systems. The new retaining wall, retaining wall that's going to be put in on 220 has been surveyed. And we are in the process of pre-drilling the areas where the footing are designed to ascertain the location and extent of the rock to be removed. Can't really give you a great timeline on how long it's going to take to put that wall in simply because we're not sure how long it's going to take to remove all the in simply because we're not sure how long it's going to take to remove all the rock. We have electricians that are finishing up, removing all the lighting fixtures. You know, you can't throw light bulbs away, so they have to basically demo all the all the light fixtures, and then we turn them over to the demo company, and they dispose of those lighting fixtures for us. Most of that has absolutely been completed. The spoils that were left over from the previous project, that giant mound behind the retaining wall, that has been removed, and we actually have donated that, that those spoils, and that should be completed this week. Actually, as I left there today, they were pretty much completed that. And now we have to dig out the backfield on the retaining wall that was installed incorrectly that'll probably get completed next week. Now onto the more exciting aspects of it. The demo contractor should mobilize the first week in April, probably start around April 7th. We'll start demo in the north end or the back street end of the courthouse. This is a little different from our planned schedule, simply because that back quarter of the courthouse has to be removed so the movers can actually get their equipment underneath the Lawson Hotel and get it to move. So that's been pushed back a little bit. Nothing's been delayed. Things have been just slightly rearranged. We've, as my came down earlier, I've got permission to close South Roanoke Street from Main Street to Back Street, and so that will, that's more of a safety factor than anything else. The wall on the east side of the courthouse is taller than road, I mean, taller than the sidewalk, so we're going to close the road just to make sure that absolutely nothing comes down in that road. And then we have some future work to do in the right of way as well as we're going to replace that sidewalk and that that rock wall. So that's currently where we stand. Anybody got any questions? One quick note to add, as far as road closure, I did send a the notice to Finn Castle, a 30-day notice, so that we're about two and a half weeks into that 30-day notice. When that 30-day notice is realized, then we will close that street.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Enjoy your day tomorrow. Sure thing. If you would provide a summary of the progress of the communication system project?
Yes, ma'am. So to date, we've completed the contract design review with Motorola. We have ordered the equipment with the factory, that usually takes about six to seven months for staging for the equipment to be built up in Chicago. We've also ordered the shelters that are going to be going at the sites. We're now planning on certain sites, we'll be able to install them earlier than than others, and we're looking to store some of the sites until we get them finished. We've got to do some construction, and as well as just some civil work at some of the sites. And we've locked down all of the sites, and we're working on one more site in Ariskiny that we're looking to move the Crawford site because of the quiet zone I spoke of earlier that will give us more coverage and more bang for the buck, as it were, for the money that we're spending on that particular, the equipment at that tower site. We've spoken to the landowner, we're in negotiations now, but things are looking really good, and hope to have that wrapped up and bringing an agenda item to you guys probably in the next, probably in about two months, I would say is probably what will happen. But things are moving along, not as quickly as we'd like to because of all the changes we've had to make in the redesigns, but I think we've now got a clear path forward and we're making progress. Thank you, ma'am.
Questions?
I think the Ariskiny site is that that's going to help a lot of folks.
Yes, sir. We're very hopeful that the site, the location we think we're going to be able to put it at will not only help the county, but also help the citizens with cell phone coverage if we can attract the co-locations for that for that site. And also, too, it will be basically adjacent to the Craig Bodotot Scenic Trail. So we do anticipate that will be a small tick-up of first responder calls because of the trail, and this will help them respond to that, as well as people will be able to use their cell phones to contact 911 and the telecommuters, telecommunications we've recognized earlier today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's, if we could, Ken, have a broadband update.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we really have three items on broadband deployment throughout the county that I think are worth updating. The first is the project with Lumos to deploy fiber connectivity to approximately 1,900 homes, principally in Buchanan, Finn Castle, and Blue Ridge is nearing completion. It does have a contract term completion of June 30th. We've had some delays with Right Of Way, with Appalachian Power, and Norfolk Southern Railroad. We have recently made the connection with the railroad and have connected them with Appalachian Power to talk directly about clearing those right-of-way issues that have held up the project. So we would expect that by the end of June, that project to serve approximately 1,900 addresses will be complete. The majority of those 1,900 addresses are now available to have connectivity, but it's a matter of finishing out that project. The second item would be the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative project with Comcast. They identified approximately 60 homes in the Blue Ridge District that they could serve in partnership with the county. This project was announced by the Commonwealth last year, and it is now getting underway with with field work and engineering. It does have a two-year completion schedule assigned to it. However, it is 60 addresses. We expect that to go quicker, but at the same time, there is also right-of-way acquisition that then causes us to be cautious in estimated two-year completion date for 60 addresses, and that would be, again, in Blue Ridge. The third item is the federal government and the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Department of Housing and Community Development have taken proposals from internet service providers to finish out providing broadband connectivity throughout the Virginia. Throughout Virginia, the program is called BEED. It stands for Broadband Equity and Access Deployment, and we did provide a letter of support administratively to one internet service provider who requested the letter. In that letter, we specified the areas that we still need to see service, being Carvins Cove Road, and also in the Arcadia area, approximately 600 homes in Arcadia north of Buchanan. We provided those specific areas in Bodotot County that need attention. We have approximately 1,000 addresses left in Bodotot to provide broadband connectivity. So that letter was provided, and the provider accepted that letter. We did discuss whether those areas would be of concern, and they did not express any concern with serving those areas. So that application is in process. It will take some time for the Commonwealth to review that and to make funding decisions across Virginia. So we'll stay tuned as to when that timeline will be for announcements, but that is is the third item with broadband. When we started this in 2017, we had an estimate of roughly one-third of households in Bodotot County had connectivity to broadband fiber infrastructure, and we can now estimate that approximately 90% of our households have access to broadband fiber connectivity. So that's a, that's a large amount of work that has gone into it. It has involved partnerships with Lumos, Craig Bodotot Electric Cooperative, others, and most recently Chantel, to deploy the infrastructure to each of our residences and businesses throughout the county. So we are almost there, but we're not quite, and it does take quite a bit of coordination among funding partners at the Commonwealth level and with private internet service providers who always have to make a business case to do something. So that's the broadband update.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Any questions?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Ken.
I have one. Do you have any estimate of the Blue Ridge District, if whenever, they might be connected, so I can share it with our citizens?
Yeah, the Comcast project, we did give it a two-year time window for those 60 addresses. We expect that to go quicker. It's all really dependent upon right-of-way acquisition with the utilities and with the railroad. With the current Lumos project, those addresses will be completed by June 30th, and then those addresses remaining in Blue Ridge and elsewhere, Finn Castle and Buchanan, would be turned over to customer sales with Lumos by June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Now, anyone have any comments? Supervisor Michael?
No, thank you.
Supervisor Nicely.
Well, I guess we're going to celebrate 15 years at Eagle Rock, and that's April 12th, 10 to 2. I can't believe I remembered that.
That's the Eagle Rock Library, 15 years. What's planned that day? I know I've seen a kind of a list.
We'll have food trucks there. There will be the band, Loop Connection, the Bluegrass Band will be playing. I think they start at 11:00. We'll be having video games. There will be chess games going on for all ages, forum hall, the usual stuff. The first 50 people there eat free, so if anyone needs a little incentive to arrive early, I think the food opens up around 11:30.
Fantastic. Thank you. Supervisor Clinton, Scott Horn, anything? So I've been asked to share that the Ladies Farm Bureau organization is doing a farm spotlight, a local agriculture spotlight, and they wanted the board and the citizens to be aware of that, as I'm sure we get that established. Ms. Bradberry can help us with pushing that out from a communication standpoint. They wanted everyone to know about that initiative. And then also, we have up here the annual report, the 2024 report for our Bodotot Fire and EMS. And as you have heard repeatedly, and we see repeatedly, these folks work really hard. Their efforts are also often unseen and unheard until you need them, and when you need them, you need them. So I encourage you all to grab this and take a look and appreciate the hard work that these folks go do to make all of our lives better. That is all I have. Please note that we will have a public hearing on the budget between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting, so if you are inclined to participate in that, we welcome your comments. I appreciate your engagement today, and I wish you all a wonderful week and a wonderful month, and I will call for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
Better not.
Yeah. That's a way to decrease relationships, right?